Afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. And those of you that are watching from home, we appreciate your tuning in. Today's meeting has a number of agenda items, the most important of which is making determinations for paid parking. We have some business to conduct prior to that. And then we will get to the parking, which I'm thinking is what most of you are here to hear that deliberation and see which direction that we're going in. We have selected a limited number of options on that. The most central ones, they're determinations that will be made as we move along. But we'll focus on the big ones today. So again, thank you. And we'll officially open the meeting, which I sometimes forget to do. And David, do you have the performance guarantee or is that Matt?
That is Matt, ma'am.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Your first agenda item is essentially an administrative item. In June 29th of 2023, the Town Council approved a performance guarantee for the orchards at Oak Island, which is a development just down the street from here for the installation of the water and sewer lines. The Town Council approved that performance guarantee agreement. Pursuant to that agreement, the developer submitted a cash bond of $203,656.25, which was 125% of the estimated cost of those improvements. Those improvements have been installed and the town has received confirmation that they are installed to our standards. So at this time, it would be prudent to release the performance guarantee and return that cash bond. I believe we have someone here from the development as well if you have questions for them. But at this time, staff wouldn't recommend releasing the bond.
Questions, Madam Mayor? Matt, when you say installed to our satisfaction, does that mean we've inspected it and approved it?
Yes, sir. We've inspected them. We've gotten certifications. We've got as-built drawings as well. Yes, sir, they're installed.
They have our seal of approval, the town?
Yes, sir. We've reviewed those. Yes, sir, we've reviewed those.
Thank you. Welcome.
Are there other questions for Matt?
What, Matt or maybe David? What's the expectation on returning the bond? It's almost the holidays. I don't know if we're trying to get this done before the holidays or if this has a 30-day terms to return it. Do we know?
No, once Town Council's released the bond, we've got some paperwork on the back end to do and then we'll release them. We'll work with the developer and applicant on actually getting those funds released. Yes, sir.
We'll either go out with this roll of checks Wednesday or go out next Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Is there a motion on the table?
A motion, Madam Mayor, to release the performance bond, performance guarantee, which was issued for orchards.
Second.
Can you amend that to include an authorized staff?
An authorized staff?
To return the cash bond.
Oh, I see it. I'm sorry. Motion to release the performance guarantee and cash bond for the orchards at Oak Island and to authorize staff to return the cash bond accordingly.
Is there a second?
I'll second this amendment.
And all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is consideration of purchasing three portable public restrooms to be used in emergencies at town parking areas or at town events. David, is this yours?
Yes, ma'am. If you so please, we can also, excuse me, move this to item number five if you would like to talk to it then, or we can talk about it now, whichever way council would like to do.
Do we want to determine the allocation of revenue for paid parking before we entertain this item?
I would like to see it moved after the discussion for allocation of parking.
Is there a motion?
I'll second that motion.
And all in favor of moving it? Motion carries. Next is the consideration of an invitation to join the Grand Strand area transportation study, MPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization. So we have now heard from the representatives from the Grand Strand as well as representatives from where our current membership lies for transportation planning, which is the Cape Fear Regional Planning Organization. And for the sake of the public, one designation, it's a federal designation for transportation planning out of Myrtle Beach, which has a north-southern North Carolina component to that that they refer to as GSAT hyphen NC. And they make their own decisions, not influenced by the South Carolina part of that MPO. The rural planning organizations is something, it's unique to North Carolina, is it not, Matt?
Every state has something similar.
Sorry, I didn't anticipate.
Lots of states have something similar, but we're the only state that has this specific setup for RPOs, yes, ma'am. But it varies a little bit from state to state, but we're the only one that has our specific model of RPO designation for all those gaps, yes, ma'am.
And so the RPO specifically for us, the Cape Fear RPO, is for the purposes of planning in areas not currently in an MPO or the Metropolitan Planning Organizations. And our membership is with Cape Fear. And Matt serves on that technical committee for the Cape Fear RPO. And Mr. Martin serves as our representative, currently in an alternate position with the Cape Fear RPO and has been responsible for working with the RPO staff and other members to shape three development projects, which have been submitted and are now in a prioritization process for development, funding, and programming. So did I get that right, Matt? Mark?
Yes.
So we're having to make a decision. We've gotten an invitation from the MPO. So our decision point is to stay with the Cape Fear RPO or to accept the invitation at this time for the Grand Strand MPO. And I'll open this to council discussion.
I'd like to jump in. What I gathered, Grand Strand has 20 South Carolina addresses, four North Carolina addresses. Shiloh has two seats on their board of directors. Their 2021 population was 4,310. Oak Island's 2021 population was 8,878. Shiloh has two seats, and we have no guarantees of seats.
One.
One. Mr. Martin has a good relationship with Cape Fear. Cape Fear has a good relationship with Mr. Martin. I see no reason to change at this time.
Any other comments from council?
Well, yes, if I may, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for the comparison chart. There are some differences here and some advantages and disadvantages respectively, depending on which organization we were to choose. But I feel compelled to second Councilman Kraft's line of thinking that we are better served presently with our local RPO. And certainly, Mr. Martin's affirmation of their effort to help us and their collegiality, I would rather for the moment be a larger fish in a small pond than be swallowed up by South Carolina, is how I would put it.
Like my colleagues, I also have a concern about our representation if we do go to GSATs. I certainly appreciate the work that my colleague, Mr. Martin, has done in the RPO. And I hope that there will be a time when he actually has a full seat at the table as opposed to an alternate seat. I think that Oak Island is due that. And I hope we can have some influence on the RPO if we stay with them.
If I could, for the citizens in the audience, just to put some context to the numbers. So the Cape Fear RPO that we're currently a member of represents residents in Brunswick, Columbus, and Pender Counties, 140,000 of them, obviously all in North Carolina. GSATs, which is what we're considering, represents 298,000 residents, of which 48,000 are in North Carolina. So 83% of the citizens that they represent are in South Carolina. So I also would agree that we'd like to stay where we're at with the Cape Fear RPO.
Mark?
I would just add, I think we had a great discussion following the Cape Fear RPO presentation at our last meeting. And I appreciate the support of all of my colleagues and my effort that I've put in for the last two years with the Cape Fear RPO. My seat is expiring at the end of December, but that still leaves me today as an active alternate member of that board. So if my colleagues would prefer that I recuse myself from this motion, I'm happy to do so. I am a little biased. I do like the Cape Fear RPO. I think they've done a great job for us. I've enjoyed collaborating with them. And I think they do represent the greater Brunswick County in a larger picture that includes our needs as well, not just from a vehicle planning for transportation, but as a pedestrian community as well. Some of the projects that are queued up on the priority list do involve pedestrian and bicycle and vehicular. So we actually have one project in every bucket, which is pretty, I think that's pretty cool. I'm pretty proud of that. So I'm happy to comply with whatever my colleagues would like to see. Like I said, I'm willing to recuse myself if needed, or I'm happy to be included in the motion.
Since the standard would be familial or financial benefit, I see no need for you to recuse yourself, Councilman Martin. In fact, your service there gives us an inside look at the organization, which I think all of us appreciate. So I would, to your question, theoretical and practical, I would answer no, you do not need to recuse.
Thank you.
I'm not hearing that your vote would go any different than what's currently been expressed. So, and I also would like to express publicly that with concurrence of council, I would be pleased to put your name forward again as in the role of a full seat to the Cape Fear RPO when the mayors are again caucused for consideration of membership. So I thank you for your service and appreciate all that you do in that area for Oak Island.
Thank you. I appreciate the recognition from you, Madam Mayor, and my colleagues. It's something that I'm passionate about, and that's transportation planning and our regional growth. So I'd be delighted if the mayor's caucus and choose me to continue serving. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Yes. Excuse me? Yeah, this is a council discussion for the time being.
I recognize that. I'm with GSAT's, Tom Brittany. I just wanted to clarify the way GSAT operates. There is no distinguished, there's no, you don't, South Carolina projects are not decided by North Carolina, North Carolina projects are not decided.
Point of order. So we've prepared this comparison sheet, which reflects the fact that that is the case. So we've done a side-by-side comparison in all fairness. And so this really is a discussion for council, but I do appreciate your input. But council has been fully informed and has that on their comparison document. So thank you. Is there a motion on the table for this particular action?
I'd be happy to make a motion. We continue to stay with the Cape Fear RPO for the next calendar year.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. Madam Clerk, Lisa, if you would, could you include this comparison with the notes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So that moves us to the consideration of details for paid parking for the 2024 season. And we have a limited number of considerations that we will make today. There are others pending as preparation for the 2024 season unfolds. So I just want to say that if there are decisions you don't see made today, doesn't mean that they're not being looked at or considered, just means that they're not considered specifically for today. But I think the central ones are there. So with that, I will open to discussion. And I believe each of our council members have a consideration that they were assigned to bring to the table and make recommendations for. Is there a sequence to that order? Pass it to you, John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And good afternoon, all. Thank you for coming. We appreciate that. A year ago, we embarked on a bold project, perhaps the boldest project in our history. There was some trepidation. There were some naysayers. Because frankly, this had island-wide impact and long-term implications. I'm happy to report that we succeeded beyond our expectations at the tune of $1.3 million. And beachfront order was restored. Property was protected. And we have begun to manage a revenue stream that will help us ease the tax burden. So all of those things are true. That being said, the system clearly was not perfect. Even the anticipated challenges were superseded by novel changes and novel challenges. And we're here today to make another round of changes, to make the system more compatible or user-friendly, particularly for residents. So based on the feedback that we received from a public hearing, we are going to work on the following areas: resident decals and cost, resident designated parking spaces, passes season daily and weekly and their rates. We're going to work on a, what I call, a system redesign element. And in these cases, my colleagues have proposals to make to start the discussion. And we'll end with a discussion of what to do with the revenue. How should it be distributed? What should it be targeted towards in terms of maximum impact to the taxpayer? So with that, I'll ask my colleague, Terry, to begin with resident decals and their cost.
Thank you, John. I would like to make a few statements before I get to the point where I will make a motion. In the paid parking public forum that was held on November 28th, council heard from many of our citizens, and we've received additional input through numerous emails. And in most all cases, we've heard residents speak in favor of holding the resident permit rates at $10 per vehicle for the 2024 calendar year. Homeowners have also asked to have the resident decal program continue. They find great value in these decals, particularly after hours during the parking season and during the off-season. These decals, as you know, preserve the right to park in resident-identified parking spaces. Auto Connect, our paid parking provider, uses license plate registration for all vehicles. But this does not prevent our town from continuing with a decal program. A resident permit and rate through Auto Connect would be available to any property which has utility services provided to their property, whether they are the owner or a long-term tenant. A current resident permit through Auto would be required for a person to obtain a decal. The decal program would be fully administered and by the town, and that includes distribution and enforcement, not Auto Connect. So having heard the residents, I would make the motion to continue the resident rate of $10 per vehicle with a limit of two permits per address, with the option to purchase a third permit at the rate of $25, and to continue the resident parking decal program for the 2024 year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
My only question, I don't see the police chief here. Has the police chief agreed to provide enforcement in the off-season and/or are we prepared to bring back a seasonal parking attendant like we used to in order to enforce the decals in the off-season?
Do you have any insights, Mr. Kelly?
David?
Yes, ma'am. So we did talk about this internally, the decals, putting those back. We haven't worked out any kind of details on what we're wanting to, until we hear what council's wanting to do today. But as far as the decals, what we used to do, the person would come in, get the application, and then we'd give them a decal for up to the three vehicles. Now it seems like they would go through Auto. Once Auto sells, Councilman Martin's permit or pass, we could probably get a printout from them, knowing what's been sold. That person could come in, show their ID, and we would be able to give them the decals. Doing that puts a strain on the downstairs because the 12,000 decals, that would be given out during that timeframe. So we'd have to look at how we would be able to administer it downstairs. As far as the policing after hours, last year, council chose not to monitor. If it's something council's wanting to do this year, is monitoring. We would have to look at the personnel for that through the fire department, I mean, excuse me, through the police department. And talking with the chief, he said he would have to relook and see what exactly council came up with, if they wanted every day, starting at 6 o'clock till the next morning at 9 o'clock, or weekends, or those kind of things. What we ran into before, people would call in and say there was a car parked there, and they'd see a police car right by. They don't know if the police car is going on a call. They don't know if they're backing up someone. And they saw the car right by, and we weren't providing the service. So that's some kind of educational thing that we're going to have to teach people. Always, when you see the police car, is not coming to that spot to be able to look at that car. So we'd have to look at manpower on both aspects to be able to see how to do it. And that's something that we could talk about when you get back to the fee part of this, the collection part, if you're wanting to be able to set something back so you don't take this fund out of general, or these items out of general fund.
It also sounds like this could be a line item in our upcoming budget workshops for the next fiscal year. So I would be in favor, as long as we make sure we don't forget, hopefully, David, you're writing. Yep. So as long as we don't forget to bring this up in the budget workshop for next fiscal year, then I would be okay with moving forward.
Mr. Chula, comment?
I mean, I think of all the, you know, the dozens of emails that we've received, and I think I could safely say that 99.9% of the emails we received from the citizens of Oak Island requested decals. So I am definitely inclined to vote and support that. Your motion, Terry?
So for the public's benefit, under our rules of procedure, I'm presiding over the meeting, so the mayor has a voice. Would you like to comment on this, mayor? You may.
I'm fine with this proposal, as long as it's a funded mandate by council. So I don't want to strand or strain our police department having to enforce parking, so.
Okay. Councilman Kraft?
I'm very much in favor of Councilwoman Cartner's motion. So many times, Auto does a great job from morning until 5 o'clock. When they leave at 6 o'clock, or 6:30, or 7 o'clock at night, our town residents may lose out on a town parking spot because there's no one there to enforce it. So if we had stickers, it would be easily identifiable. And secondly, last year, we talked about stopping cars from parking in the strand parking spots after 10 o'clock at night. And this would give us another reason to enforce that situation. So I'm very much in favor of your motion.
Scott, would you like the last word, or I'm prepared to call the question?
Ready.
Want to call the question? Madam Clerk, I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Hi, I'm Mayor Portembok.
Yes.
And Councilman Cartner?
Yes.
And Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
And Councilman Chula?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next area of paid parking to be examined and hopefully improved is resident parking spaces. Councilman Kraft?
I've always said, concerning paid parking, that it can't be a detriment to our taxpayers. If it's a detriment to our taxpayers, then we've lost out on our benefits. We did benefit. We made $1.3 million off paid parking last year. That's tremendous. So now let's go forward, looking at reserved parking spots for Oak Island taxpayers. Nearly 1,500 spots, and we were hoping for 364 of those to be reserved spots for our people. We ended up with 247 reserved spots. Like Councilman Chula, I get a lot of emails. In the last two or three days, people have been emailing me saying, there are 600 strand parking spots. How come our residents are not being more honored on those 600 strand parking spots? I would like to see our 247 go to the 364 that we tried to get to last year, with an emphasis on additional strand parking. However, if we go beyond 1,500 parking spots, more sold off the island, then we're right back to being a detriment to our taxpayers. If we go to 1,500, I don't know what is going to be said after I speak, but if we go to 1,500 parking spots, I would like to have 400 reserved for the taxpayers of Oak Island. So the motion I'd like to make is, I make a motion to increase reserved parking spots for Oak Island paid parking residents to 364, with the understanding if off-the-island sales increase to a minimum of 1,400, that Oak Island residents will then have 400 reserved parking spots.
Is there a second?
For discussion purposes.
I'll second. Question. Bill, clarify, Mr. Councilman Kraft, clarify that last point if you could. Bill, clarify, Mr. Councilman Kraft, clarify that last pun if you could, the 1,400 off-island. Tell me what you mean by that.
Right now, we've sold 1,000 off-island parking passes for 2023.
Seasons.
Season passes.
Okay.
Season passes for 2023. And that worked. And if by chance we are to sell more than 1,000, I would like to also have more reserved spots for the Oak Island taxpayers. I'm happy at 364, and hopefully everybody else is, if we have 1,500 parking spots. If we go, I mean, if we have 1,000 parking spots, if we go to 1,400, I'd like to go to 400 reserved spots for our taxpayers.
Mr. Martin?
Trying to do quick math in my head. Would it be more logical to word it in such a way that as staff adds one parking space for availability for any visitor, that we would add one resident space? So we'd have a one-for-one, so add one, gain one for the residents until we reach 400 for the residents? Because what if staff comes back with their engineering study and we can only add, you know, 50 more parking spaces? Because I think we should, and I know we're talking revenue later, but we know what revenue we generated with our parking spaces in year one. So to a certain degree, do we want to protect that revenue in going into year two? So if we go with a plan to do a one-for-one, add one, gain one for the residents, then we grow parking equally. Every time a visitor gets a spot, now a resident gets a spot. And then if you want to cap that at 400, I don't have a problem with that. Maybe staff? Staff, what do you think? Or David, what's the reasoning that we can get to 1,500 parking spaces in the upcoming year? I know we added spaces.
Before the season starts, I don't think we can get all those.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to go.
The study, I think that you're going to talk about here in a little bit, having that done, well, so what we did last year when we started this program, we went out and we looked around the town. Jim went around and looked around the town as well to where we could add spots. Some things that Jim was not aware of that we were aware of when the people have side driveways on the play streets, 20-foot setbacks on both sides, so those three spots are done away with. And we have more and more people that's starting to access on the play streets. Stormwater ditches, just because it was dry that minute doesn't mean that that's part of our stormwater plan. So there's things that we know internally that we have to plot for. Talking with Scott and them, they started adding spots last year as they found them and able to work into them. Some of the biggest areas we have, we have some areas on the beach that were never developed, street ends. We could go in and develop those if council so chose. And you're starting to add probably 10 or 11 spots at each one of those. There's three of those that we could look at. So those are the easy ones to go back and get. I think the study would show us where the hard ones are to go get. Some of the play streets, we can extend it further. And so I'd say it's a time thing for us to be able to get them in. But last year, during the whole season, we kept adding as we went. And we kept adding the residential spots. Every time we found one, we would add one, and then we'd change our map and stuff to show that. And one-to-one comparison would be an easier thing for us to do, to try to increase it to a number that council approved.
What's our total number of spots?
About 13,000.
1300.
Just over 13,000. Oh, excuse me, 1300. Sorry about that, not 13,000, Mary.
Okay, I'm going to go to my colleague, Ms. Carter. Comment?
I support Mr. Kraft in increasing, trying to get us to the number of reserved spaces that we had hoped for last year. I'm wondering if he would entertain an amendment to his motion to include more resident strand parking.
Happily. I can modify my motion right now, but.
Hold on a second. In accepting the proposed amendment, by our rules, it is already modified. So I'll say this, I support and stand by the original goal that we established, assuming it's practical. I don't know that it is. I think later on, when we talk about a system redesign and having a professional engineer look at this, we'll know whether we can get to 1,500 or not. I think 364 should be the goal, and where possible, good preference to residents for the strand, which I believe was the amendment. Is that correct? There's heads nodding yes. Okay. Mayor, would you like to have a comment before I call the vote?
I simply want to say that if we look at converting some of our larger vehicle spaces to pull in LSVs or compact spaces for seater LSVs, that perhaps that would give us some additional bandwidth to expand spaces. So I would hope that staff would take a look at that as well.
All right. Lisa, do you have the amended motion?
I do, thank you. You want me to read it out?
Yeah, please.
Motion was, I'm going to read it originally and then with the amendment to, hold on, I have to scroll up. I have a tiny little window. Okay. Motion to increase parking for Oak Island residents to 364, with the understanding that if off-island sales were 1,400, Oak Island residents would then have 400 parking spots. And then the amendment was to add more resident strand parking.
Before we vote, Mr. Martin brought up the one-for-one, so I would like to amend that, Ms. Clerk, and start all over.
So do we have to vote down the motion on the table first?
Well, I think we can modify it. It seems to me that it's quite speculative to suppose at this point in this coming year we're going to have off-island parking, right? I think what we're trying to do is maximize on-island parking. We have a target goal of 364, and then we have a stated preference to install more resident spaces at the gateways. I would strike the 400 off-island, and let's get to 364, which is the original goal. Let's give preference to residents on the strand, and we'll forget about the island for right now, off-island for right now. It seems to me that's going to cause problems for us.
I don't know if it will cause problems if we agree, if there's 10 more parking spots allocated, five go to the taxpayers, and five go off the island capped at 400.
Season.
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 Capped at 400.
Not off-island, but season.
We can call that the Martin Rule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. So the motion is to increase parking for Oak Island residents to 364, with the understanding that if off-island sales, the seasonal passes, are 1,400, Oak Island residents will then have 400 parking spots. It was amended to add additional resident spots along the beach, and amended again to use Councilman Martin's suggestion for one-on-one additional spaces.
Correct and true reading. I'll call the question.
Okay. Polling, council?
Yes, please, roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Martin, here's the floor. Passes and rates.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I don't know if I get what I consider to be the more difficult one for some other reason other than, I don't know, but we'll see. So there was a lot of feedback, of course, on November 28, and emails and phone calls and all that fun stuff. So the first topic in my assignment is the seasonal permit. You'll recall in year one, we capped those at 1,000. So in other words, if someone who wasn't a resident, whether they lived in Brunswick County, or they lived in Raleigh, or they lived in South Carolina, they had access to purchase what we call a season permit. I think early on, some very bad misinformation was published on social media, and it gave the season permit a negative connotation. And that was, someone said a season permit allows someone to park in a resident spot. And it took months of interacting with the public and trying to post on social media and responding to emails to clarify that that is not true. A season permit does not give someone permission to park in a resident spot. Two completely different topics. So I wanted to get out there first and foremost before we start a discussion. There was probably about a third, a third, a third. There's three opinions on season permits, and they're all relatively equal. There's a group of people that want to keep it at 1,000. There's a group of people that have suggested increasing it anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 to 2,000. There's another group of people that have said, just sell, sell as many as you can. I mean, just make it unlimited. Why would we restrict selling a season permit? The advantage of a season permit is we collect all the money upfront. So if you would have saw in the financial reporting that was presented to us by Auto, there was a big blip right up front in the early months of paid parking. That big blip on the revenue was season passes being sold or season permits. So at this point in time, after carefully considering the input and looking at the revenue that was generated by season permits, I would like to, in my first motion, make a motion that we change our approach and had unlimited number of season permits for year two.
Mr. Martin, as per my prerogative presently, I would prefer we break these motions apart. So is there a second for this motion? I'll second it for discussion purposes. Mr. Chulo?
Based upon the feedback that we've received from so many citizens of Oak Island and personal experience, the thought of going from 1,000 to unlimited is not something I would support at all. I would support a somewhat of an increase, and I think that's to be determined through discussion what that would be, but I would not support unlimited. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
In my discussions with you, Councilman Martin, you pointed out that the maximum would probably be 1,500 or 1,600 off-the-island seasonal passes anyway, that when we start thinking it will be 4,000 or 5,000, that's beyond expectation. But still, my fear is, I'm allowed to go to Independence Mall at Christmas time, and I'm welcome to come park in their parking lot. But when I go over there at Christmas time, even though I'm welcome to come, there's nowhere for me to park. So I'm of the opinion, the more off-the-island passes we sell makes it that much harder for our Oak Island residents to find that parking spot when they go at 10:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon. I respect your research, but I would like to see it capped at a certain number.
Carter?
I too would be unable, at this point going into the second year, to support unlimited, an unlimited number of passes. I think there is a number somewhere out there that quote-unquote breaks the system. I don't know what that number is, but I think that the higher the number of season passes we sell, the more likely we are to break the system, especially for our residents. So I would be agreeable to picking a number that's something less than unlimited.
I think two things are true. One, the Auto Connect algorithm is true. People with season passes are going to come or to 10 times a year max. The spaces are not going to be occupied on a daily basis. The data supports that. If they are, only for a period of time. But having said that, I also agree with my colleague, there is a capacity limit. I don't know what that number is either, but there is surely a finite number. So I cannot support unlimited. I can support an increase, which I think the majority of council can. And for discussion purposes, Councilman Martin, I'll propose 1,500, which would be obviously a significant increase in the number of season passes.
Since I'm being allowed to participate, let's ask the experts.
You may participate, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, Mr. Kelly, in conversations with Auto Connect, with Mr. Varner, is there a recommendation, having looked at the numbers, a point at which we can calculate that by reaching a certain number of seasons passes, we then erode the amount of money we would raise through hourly and weekly passes? Or hourly, daily, I'm sorry.
Really, I've talked with Jim, is one of the questions that came up, is there a number where we believe if we sell a number of season passes, where do we think the curve is going to go? Nobody's going to buy them anymore because everybody's already either bought what they have, or they're going to come and pay the hourly rate, which you referred to. In discussions with him before, that number was in between 1,500 and 2,000. That's probably the breaking point where the curve starts to roll the other way. That doesn't answer the question that Terry had about the number or the breaking point of when the system's full. We could ask Jim if he sort of knows that question. But the only thing we had addressed before is where do we believe the breaking point where people are going to stop purchasing the number of passes, or we're going to see the numbers fall off?
Or not purchase hourly?
Yeah.
Jim, would you like to give a professional opinion? It's optional. You don't have to. If you do, please go to the microphone.
So, yes.
Name?
Mr. Kelly did state that I do believe that the, there is that rollover point somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000. One of the data points that we presented in last month was that, yes, you can support more season permits. I think 2,000 is probably the right kind of number. Don't disagree with 1,500. That's totally up to you. One of the other options, and you talked about, would it degrade hourly? And the answer to that is no. We do not see degradation there. The reason we had so many hourly and daily permits was because people could not get season permits. They still didn't come more than five or 10 times. People buy a season permit for ease. Once they have a season permit, they don't have to do anything when they come to park. They don't have to log in. They don't have to buy anything. They just park in a valid space, and they're good to go. So there's a lot of value that we see there. The other option that a lot of our other town customers use is to allow people to buy up to a season permit. So, you know, they go for a day for $25, $25, $25. And they say, boy, this is really getting tough. I'm just going to go ahead and spend $150 and get my season permit. A lot of people do that and see a lot of value, and it just makes customer satisfaction for both the town and for us increase. So those are the options. But back to your point, Mr. Rock, 1,500 to 2,000, I think, is where we'll see the rollover. Based on the data that we showed last month, and the number of people who came to park this town today could support 2,000.
Thank you. So, Mr. Martin, my amendment to your motion remains on the floor. Do you accept it, or do we want to put it to a vote?
I would like to counter with 2,000. I would like to counter with 2,000 instead of 1,500.
Comment.
So first, your paid parking, right? We learned a lot. And I'll be speaking next about, you know, going out and hiring an engineer to, to really help us put the strategy together. But the thought of going from 1,000 to 1,500 or 2,000, a 50% increase or 100% increase, it scares me. And should, I suspect it scares a lot of people in the audience as well. We have 1,300 spots now. Mr. Kelly said we cannot get to 1,500 before the season starts. So I'd be inclined to say we go with 1,300, season passes.
Mr. Kraft.
We're only in the second year, and I think we should take baby steps instead of gigantic steps. We don't know how bad Memorial Day will be, or how bad 4th of July will be. It may not rain all weekend like it did this past year. Mr. Varner said we had five bad Saturdays, and other than that, our parking withstood the, the people. I want to take baby steps, but if we're already at 1,300, 300 more is easily achieved. So I'd like for you to think along those lines, Mr. Martin.
Okay. Ms. Gardner.
I'm in agreement with my colleague, Mr. Kraft, and, and Mr. Chulo. I think, this being in the second year, we need to take things slowly, see what happens, see what kind of feedback we get, how the, how it, how it plays out. And then if another increase is warranted next year, we certainly can look at that. I don't have trouble supporting moving to 1,500.
Clearly, I'm for 1,500, but I can live with 1,300 if that's the consensus of council. I think it's too conservative based on the data, but I think we do need to increase the number, and if that's a manageable number, we're comfortable with that. I could live with that. So to you, Mr. Martin.
My last comment, so we don't belabor this any longer, is I'm not sure I understand concerns that a season permit is scary or detrimental to parking. A season permit purchased by someone that lives in, say, Asheville, North Carolina, that vehicle is not parked in a parking spot during the season every day of the week. That vehicle may likely only come one or two weeks for their season to use their rental property, or to rent a home, or, or stay locally. So I, I just don't understand if there's a misconception that a season permit takes a parking spot every day for the whole season? Or does people understand that these vehicles just come and go and aren't here seven days a week for the whole season? You know, if we, if we can't get to 2,000, which it sounds like that's where the bell curve is for us, then I think the original suggestion was 1,500. I mean, that's at least moving in the right direction. 1,300, in my opinion, isn't gonna work, because we already had phone calls last year where people wanted a season permit, and we had already sold the 1,000 permits within a matter of a few days of, of opening up. And Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, four days, we sold 1,000 season permits. So I, I just don't see the harm in a season permit. But if, if colleagues are a little fearful of that, then we can go for 1,500. But like in year one, I suggested if we hit that and we still get phone calls, that we should keep selling. And I think we did sell more than 1,000. A handful, yeah, by accident, right? Because someone lost count. So, you know, I could, I could come to 1,500, but perhaps with the caveat that, you know, if caller number 1501 from Asheville, North Carolina wants a season permit, I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't sell it.
Okay. I'm gonna give the mayor a chance to, to comment. And before I do that, Councilman Martin, you've modified your motion to 1,500. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I could support 1,500 easily. And it sounds as if that's where council is, is, is heading. And just FYI, I could consider potentially higher, because I'd like to separate out the bulk purchase of permits from the seasons passes, which makes more season passes available and isn't taken up by those with entrepreneur or business interests of pulling tens of passes out of that seasons passes.
Okay. I'm gonna second Mr. Martin's modified motion of 1,500. Call the question.
Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Carry on, Mr. Martin.
Okay. Now to the second part of my assignment. The actual fee schedule for paid parking, that would encompass the hourly rate, the weekly rate, and the daily rate. I guess I should've said daily before weekly. And then, of course, the season permits that we just discussed. So last year, we set the rates according to what I call the local competition. So we looked at our neighbors and looked to see how much they were charging for paid parking. And so we kind of fell in line with that to be competitive. So last year, we were at $5 an hour, $20 a day, $80 a week. And then, of course, the season permit was 175. So in looking at feedback and speaking with people, I'd like to make a motion that for year two, we keep the rate schedule the same as we had in year one. I don't see a need to try to increase rates. I still think our rates are competitive, and we clearly made revenue targets with our current rates. So let's give year two another try, and then we can certainly look at increasing rates in year three. But I would like to keep the rates the same for, for year two. So my motion would be to keep the same rate schedule as we have today.
I'm gonna pause for just a second, and, I'm sorry, Jim, can you come back to the Would you agree with this statement that our current rates, which are being made a motion to be continued, are competitive with our neighboring towns that have paid parking?
I would say that it's very, within a couple of percent. The day rates range 20 or 25. Hourly are $4 or $5 an hour. Season rates, generally, I see 150, so 175 or a little larger for this environment is not unusual.
I'm gonna stop you at yes. I'm gonna second Mr. Martin's motion. Thank you. Discussion.
Again, in this second year, we learned a lot last year, and I would be inclined to not nudge the rates much, if at all, and to leave them flat from last year.
There are no, Mr. Kraft?
I don't want the town to be accused of money grabbing. If Mr. Martin's research says stay the same, I, I could've voted to go up a little bit, but I also can agree with your motion.
Gardner.
I'm, I'm good with leaving the rates as is for reasons that my colleagues have mentioned. We are making some other changes to this program, so I think for this year, we're okay to leave it where we are.
I find myself in agreement with Councilman Martin. So I'm gonna call the question after the mayor comments, if you wish to comment.
I'm in agreement.
She is in agreement. Call the question.
Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Martin. We have had an unusual configuration here for a reason. I just want to say that the next presenter will be the mayor, and she's done an awful lot of work with our attorney, so we thank her for that publicly. And this concerns commercial slash bulk permit buys, and you have the floor, Madam Mayor.
So as I commented a little bit earlier, last year, there was an erosion of the number of passes available to individuals, because there was a small number of those with entrepreneurial interests. I don't want to peg necessarily businesses who bought more than the, passes that were available to individuals, because that number was capped. So that having been said, I also looked at, spoke at length with our attorney to see what was and wasn't legal. And we came to the conclusion that the bulk purchase of passes, which in this case, given what has passed thus far, would be four or more passes, would incur a surcharge, so that companies, if you will, or those with entrepreneurial interests, would be more fair even to the town. So that in 2023, the program parameters established an inherent inequity between OKI businesses that shoulder the burden of a, or the opportunity, as you might look at it, of having a storefront, and those who were buying multiple passes and renting carts out of their driveways or otherwise not having to take on the, the burden of all that goes with maintaining a business, including having to abide by town ordinances. So basically, they're running a business out of the auspices of the town. So those who have registered carts in the town parking programs in excess, in this case of four or more, possess a marketing advantage. And I think that's unfair to the businesses that, that have business permits and that also abide by ordinances. Average weekly rental rates observed during our inaugural season range from 350 to 500 per vehicle. There are 26 weeks and 183 days in the 2024 parking season, unless expanded, the season is expanded by council. So at a weekly rate of a modest $400 a week, a single cart would gross over $10,000 for those who were making that investment. I've received numerous requests to create a separate category. The legal way to do this is to consider bulk purchase, and so that we're not constraining business, which is not legal. And that leaves full availability of season passes capped at 1,500 to, for individuals for whom they're intended. So the bulk purchase program will be administered by Otto, along with the other purchase. And John will give my motion, and if I could modify the amount, John, to 325 as written here.
Okay. And I'm gonna open the floor for discussion. There is no motion, because the mayor is not permitted.
Cannot make a motion.
Under our rules. Mr. Martin, would you like to begin? I'm just going right, right to left.
Just, I guess, some questions for clarification. Is the limit of four or more, it's not restricted to just a business? Is that what I heard you say?
That's correct.
That it has to apply across the board to individuals as well as a business? How did we land on four?
Because individuals were capped at three. So a bulk purchase would be four or more.
I don't understand. Individuals are capped at three?
A resident or homeowner cannot purchase more than three passes. They're capped at three.
Those are for resident spaces. This is a season permit, not a resident space. So, so my concern is, I know numerous families throughout the area where the husband and wife had at least three children, sometimes four children, and those children have now had children. And they want to come and have a family reunion and rent a home, second row, third row, whatever choice they make. And as, they want to buy a season permit, but all of their families coming in from different destinations with their own vehicle. So if you're gonna say four or more has to apply to everyone, now that family is gonna be burdened with a significant cost to buy a season permit for their family, their family members, so they can... I guess I'm, I'm struggling to understand the four. If, and if we can't limit it to a business, then I think that number needs to be higher. I think that there should be, you know, five or six as maybe is the number before you all of a sudden hit them with, I think I heard you say 325 is the number you're gonna throw out for per, per, per permit, is, is what you're saying. So I understand the business might be able to afford that, because they just build it into their business model. But a, an individual with family members trying to get them here, now they're gonna be burdened with, with an additional cost for a season permit, because they exceed the, the number for an address or household. So...
Since there's no motion, just to be technically correct here, I'm gonna continue the discussion. When a motion is made, we'll come back. I hear clearly what you're saying about changing the number. Mr. Chulo.
So I had the opportunity to speak to, to owners of golf cart rental companies here on the island. And both are understanding that, they know the price is going to go up for them. They gave me an indication, as long as the price didn't increase more than a double, that that's something they can live with, and that's something that they are able to pass on to those that are renting golf carts. So the 325 sounds like a very viable solution to me.
Okay. Mayor, I'm gonna come back to you at the end. Mr. Kraft?
This is frustrating, because this could jump up and bite us if we don't get this My family went to Myrtle Beach four or five years ago. I had an SUV, and my sister had a big station wagon. We got all the parking passes in my SUV and my sister's station wagon, and my nephews, who had the little compact cars, they borrow rides from us every time we went somewhere. So I would think four parking passes per family can be worked out by the family. I don't have a, a problem with that. I just want to stop whatever decision we need to make. One or two companies buying 30, 40, 50 passes at the same cost, somebody that lives in BSL paid. And the mayor's done her research and tried to figure out what legally we can do, so I'll follow your lead.
Ms. Gardner.
I am, I fully support the proposal that the mayor has made. I think four is a good number, although I am willing to, to discuss that. I'm 100% in favor of increasing the cost. We need to stop the folks who are buying 50 at a time. That just isn't fair to everybody else.
And I, I began this process by saying, it was a bold project. And it was. When you do bold things, you take risks, and you make mistakes. And one of the mistakes we made was not restricting the commercial folks from buying up all these passes. We're about to close that gap, because I too support this concept. You know, we, we learned our lesson. It was an innocent mistake, but a mistake nonetheless. Okay, now we're back. That's not gonna happen again unless you pay for a surcharge. So the question I have, I guess for further discussion, is Councilman Martin has suggested that the trigger point should be five or six. And I think Councilman Kraft said you're comfortable with four?
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, so we, we need to resolve the, the difference. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
My only comment at this point, and I appreciate those who support the concept at least, is that there is an inequity between those who have a, a business with a storefront and who abide by our ordinances from those who do not. So they're basically engaging in a, a commercial enterprise at the expense, if you will, of our business owners. And I want very much to support our local business community. So I think this establishes inequity all the way around.
I was just going to add, so a side benefit to this, you know, we've seen an explosion of LSV rentals from, not just from the local businesses, it's from businesses Wilmington and points north or points west. This is going to give us an opportunity so we can identify these companies. We can make sure that they are being, that they are in fact registered as a business. And should we decide to put rules of the road together that they, and mandate that they have to be posted in the carts, we'll now know who they are. Because right now, we don't when they're paying the same price.
Yes, and that's an excellent point, that's something that Chief Morris has expressed as a direct concern, offline business people dumping carts in the middle of the night without any rules, without any idea of who they are. That's problematic. So I see a slight difference here, you know, I'm doing the math in my head too. So if you rented five golf carts, the traditional version, you could transport 20 people. I mean, that has to be enough because you could run a shuttle if you had to from wherever you were on the island. So does four versus five, is that something we want to fight about? Because if we do, we can continue the discussion.
The, for those who have a larger family, there's nothing that precludes those members of the family that live in Asheville or Raleigh or Boiling Spring Lakes, for that matter, that they could buy their own season's passes and not have it be borne on, you know, the individuals in, in the town. So I do think there are reasonable workarounds. Not that I'm trying to constrain anyone, but I'm trying to come up with a system that works all around.
Yeah, I understand. And my, I mean, my point isn't to, to reward a, a business by raising the, the trigger point or the threshold value. I certainly agree that LSV rental companies should operate as a business. And in fact, if we don't charge a business license to them, we, that's something we need to bring up in another meeting.
That's, that's not legal.
Okay, well then, because I know in the, my previous town, we were able to charge business license fees to everybody that started up a business, whether they were in your house or, or storefront. So yeah, I mean, I, I agree that their business model supports paying a, an increased fee to operate the LSV. Again, my only concern was, I think, I think four is too low because I think there will be some families that are going to maybe bump up into that. I don't know how all households work, but in, in my household, every time there's a, a benefit to be had, the kids come to my wife and I and say, oh, well, you're, you're going to cover this cost, right? And so, so I do see families probably trying to buy additional season permits for their, for their family members, and it would all be coming out of one household address. I don't see the problem with just taking it to five because I don't see a, a LSV rental company operating with only, you know, four or five carts. They, they are literally trucking in tens, twenties, fifties, you know?
Fair enough. I think you made the case. Mayor, can you live with five?
If the rest of council can, I think that's a step in the right direction.
We don't have a motion on the floor. Let's just do an informal consensus. Mr. Chulo, can you live with five?
I would prefer to leave it at four. I think that's a very solid proposal.
I can live with five. My understanding is, if the family comes in from Asheville and Mr. Smith, Mrs. Smith, and their child Freddie and their other child and their other child, if they want to rent five carts from an out of town golf cart company, the out of town golf cart company is not providing them the pass. They're having to buy the pass from the town. Is that everybody else's understanding?
No.
Nah, I see.
The, the LSV would come with.
With the pass.
If the operator of the rental bought a season permit, it would be attached to that tag on that LSV.
Okay. Let's, so one for five, one for four. Where do you stand, Mr. Kraft? Trying to avoid putting two separate motions up if we don't have to.
At this point, I probably would go with five, but to...
Okay. Ms. Carter.
I think after discussion and more information, I'm, I'm settled on four.
Okay, and I, I could go for five, but let's, no, I'll make the motion and then we'll proceed. We may need to, but that's okay. So I make a motion to establish a separate category for the bulk purchase of permits of four or more permits by individuals and businesses at the rate of $325 per vehicle for the 24, 20, 2024 parking season. This program will be evaluated at season's end. That's the original motion as discussed by the mayor. Roll call, please.
Is there a second?
Can we amend that to five, Councilmember Bach? I thought that was our discussion.
We can. We can do it that way if you'd like. So we need a roll call on the amendment.
Okay.
It's not been accepted.
First, I need a second.
Second.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
And who was the second?
I'll second for purposes of the amendment. And then the amendment for five instead of four.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote on the five instead of four. Okay. Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
No.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Okay, so that amendment passes three to two.
And now we need the motion.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you for considering that. I appreciate it. And now a roll call vote on the motion as amended. Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Kraft?
The motion as amended is?
Motion as amended is?
Five.
Is, as five, is to $325 per pass for five or more passes.
Yes.
And Councilman Chulo?
No.
Councilman Martin?
Yes.
That passes three to two. So five or more is the mo, is the decision, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for, and please thank council for us for researching a legal way to do that.
May I ask a point of clarification there? So the first four passes would be at the regular price, so it'd be five and above.
Correct. That's my understanding of the mayor. Is that correct? Yes.
Has it passed? Yes.
Thank you for the clarification. Are we ready for the next one?
Yes, sir.
So there's one last item on paid parking. I will put a motion on the floor for purposes of discussion only. And we can refine it if we come to an agreement. So with respect to the distribution of funds accrued from paid parking, I would suggest a percentage breakdown, and we have our CFO in the audience who can give you an actual number if we come to agreement. I would suggest 50% of the revenue go to tax savings. 15% go to ongoing system maintenance, expansion, bumpers, signs, et cetera. And 35% go to a special project selected by council.
Did we miss travel demand management?
Oh, we did. I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. Forgive me. Mr. Chulo, thank you.
Thank you, Mr., now, Councilmember Bach. So John, I'm, Councilmember Bach, initially, when he introduced us, when he started off, he talked about a system redesign. So last year, you know, a very successful first year, but we have an opportunity now to take a second look at what our plans are for 2025, 2024. So we've received and generated a lot of suggestions for the 2024 paid parking. And before we move forward with implementing it, it makes sense to take a step back and focus on an overarching strategic plan for paid parking. This will consist of many facets, including increasing the number of parking spots, reviewing and acting on increasing the number of residence spots, improving the locations of bumpers, creating LSV-only spots and lots, and the list is long. I suggest we pay special attention to LSV parking as a strategic way to increase the number of parking spots. I recommend we move forward with hiring a parking engineering firm to look at the actions we've taken in our 2023 paid parking plan, the suggestions received, and provide us all a strategic plan for 2024 and beyond. Our investment in an engineering firm should pay off exponentially with increased revenue, better citizen and guest safety, and citizen satisfaction. I would like to make a motion that town council instruct staff to immediately begin the search process to contract with a qualified parking engineering firm through an RFP process. I propose town council allocate up to $75,000 in engineering costs for a strategic 60-day engineering analysis. We will use 2023 paid parking revenue for this expense, and therefore, we will not have to use monies from our general fund for this expense.
With apologies again for losing sight of you for a moment. I'll, I'll second that motion. Forward discussion. Mr. Martin?
I had made a note regarding additional LSVs in a single spot. Specifically, the parallel parking spots could accommodate multiple LSV vehicles in those spots. Is the intent of this engineering study to include capacity of, of smaller vehicles like LSVs?
Great question, and the answer is absolutely. You know, I look at the, the single golf cart or LSV-only lot that we have, which is one we try to park in, if we can find a spot. And there are 10 parking spots there for LSVs. And if we were to use, have that used for automobiles, we'd have four. So the, larger the opportunity we have to construct LSV-only lots, not at the expense of cutting back on the number of cars that can park, it just seems that it will help on the capacity side.
And then, question for staff, is the not to exceed, I think you said not to exceed, right?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $75,000, number one, is it adequate? Number two, would we even be able to identify an engineer with this skill set to conduct something within 60 days, you said? 60, 60-day duration? Does auto have engineer people that they're aware of? Do we have an engineer who specializes in parking spaces? How would we, how would we actually execute if we said, yep, spend $75,000?
So I'd talk with Jim a little bit about this. We reached out to Alan the other day, who was here from the COG, talking about the RPO, and also with Sam. They can, they recommended three different companies that we could look at, local firms. Matt reached out to them and sent them some emails today asking them, depending on what came out of this meeting here today, if we could set up a time next week or after the first of the holidays. They came back and said that probably the first week in January, we could sit down and, and discuss something. City of Southport just took on this in, in Southport. I think they're paying $50,000 for a study. It's a little bit more detailed than what we're looking at. Timetable-wise, Jim has a lot of the data that he was referring to, that we can provide. He has ratios, turntable, how long people, average parking, those kind of things that these people would need to put into their study. So I think that would help the process along and speed it up a little bit. 60 days would probably be a little tight, but it's something that we can ask for in the RFP and then put an alternate submittal in there for them to submit what they, their adequate timeframe would be. But it should be a, a doable thing, but it wouldn't happen even for consideration until after the first of the year.
That concludes my questions, and I would be in, in favor of, of moving forward with the study.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Councilman Chulo, how'd you come up with the $75,000? Was that a safety net, just in case it goes beyond 50 or 55 or?
I mean, would I, the, good question. So I did a lot of research, and 50,000 was the number that I came up with. But I think that, you know, building that safety net in there and capping it at 75,000 just seemed like the, the wise thing to do.
Councilman Carter?
I, I support this idea 100%. I spent 30 years dealing with transportation master plans and travel demand management plans, and so I know the benefit that they can provide. I think our, our town staff did an admirable job last year getting as many parking places identified as they could in the short time period that they have. But I think at this stage where we have a little, a little more time now than we've been through a year, it certainly warrants having someone professionally look at this, make sure that we're maximizing our space for vehicles and LSVs. And so I would, I would support this endeavor.
I too find myself in full support when we compared notes as a council on things that we needed to do to improve an imperfect system. My suggestion is very similar to Councilman Chulo's. I call it redesign, re-engineer. I, I think we're at the point where if this is going to continue, we, we need a professional assessment and a strategic view of it. We can't do it by hand, so to speak. We really need to know what we're doing. And so I too strongly support the motion, and I understand the need for a cushion to attract an engineer in such short notice. And Madam Mayor?
I would agree that this is very much needed. If we're to expand our spaces, then I think there's an economy to be realized from measuring each of these spaces out per some standard, that industry standard, that is. And I think it's also, is a benefit to helping to determine whether we really can continue to have these very large pickup trucks park at the access points because it really makes for an unsafe situation. So I think to have some professional advice and consultation in this area is, is really a mandate that we should abide by.
And unless there's an objection and the need for further discussion, I'll call the question.
And I apologize. I look back and I see the motion, and the first question came from Councilmember Martin, but I don't have a second noted. So if somebody seconded, I missed it.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then for the vote, Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, one last one. With apologies to my colleagues. So with respect to the distribution of the funds, this is a motion to begin discussion. So I'll ask for a second once I make this motion. So taking the revenue accrued from paid parking, I would recommend that 50% of it go into tax savings for, for our citizens. 15% for ongoing maintenance of the system, bumpers, engineering study, et cetera. And 35% for another project selected by council. We've talked about paving, greenways, other amenities. There's a constellation of things there. Do I have a second to begin discussion with those percentages?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. And why not continue with the rhythm? Mr. Martin?
Thank you. My only question would be, I greatly, number one, I greatly appreciate using percentages. I think that's absolutely the correct way to look at parking revenue. That way, next year, if we get more or less, whatever, we have the buckets defined by a percentage. My only concern is for the reduction in tax. Are we specifically designating that towards sand tax? I didn't, I'm not sure I heard that in your...
It's not. Just tax reduction is on the table.
Yep. So my recommendation would be specifically sand tax reduction. And then my question would be for staff, as I see there in the audience.
Yes.
Is in, in light of the 50% of revenue creates a fractional... light of the 50% of revenue creates a fractional tax reduction, how would we instruct staff to either round up or round down to make it more adoptable into the, the tax bill?
Before we go to our CFO, who is here, thankfully, let's hear from the, there may be other technical questions that she's going to field. So Chulo?
Councilman Bach, I'm still getting used to this. So I think about your proposal, and it seems to, it hits all the dots that the citizens of Oak Island have asked for, is use some of the paid parking revenue for sand or tax relief, possibly sand tax relief. We know we've got to use some for maintenance, for gravel and engineering and bumpers and whatnot, and special projects. I mean, 35% of, you know, $1.1 million, that's a sizable, sizable amount of money. That's so special projects, you know, paving, greenways, you know, we've, we received an awful lot of input from citizens of Oak Island for suggestions on what to do with that. And I think this, the way you've broken it down, John, gives us great latitude.
Mr. Kraft?
Every time we talk about having extra money, I immediately say 78% of our streets are properly paved, which means 22% of our taxpayers are watching other people's streets look so much better than theirs. 35% of $1.3 million is $450,000. I would like to see that 35% go to street paving.
Okay. Councilman Carter?
It's nice being at the, at the end, because my colleagues cover all the things that I was going to mention. So I will just say that I think this is a fair and equitable way to do it. I'm definitely in support of reducing the tax burden in whatever way we can for our residents, and so I thank you for this proposal.
Yes, forward discussion and subject to amendment, Madam Mayor?
I fully support the allocation. I think this is, again, a wise way to move forward and would be very much in favor in reducing the sand tax by another penny. We've got it from six to three, and it'd be nice to get it down to two if we can be assured that the two cents will continue to sustain the beach management plan that has been approved by CRC.
So would, this is a question for council, would you like the actual numbers? What 40%, what 35% means, what 50? Okay. CFO, would you mind providing that?
Well, before she gives you those numbers, what you've been talking about is a perfect world scenario. As Auto presented to us, we have a storm. Councilman Kraft made a representation of a rain event. We have these, we don't get those dollars. So those tax dollars don't come in. And it's something if we, we are looking to fund certain projects with, and we don't have these kind of things sitting there, then we're going to have to take this out of a different fund, or we're going to have to pull it from accommodations fund or something that we're using for the sand tax. So there's also things that you've got to remember, in a perfect world, we made that money this year. And if we putting some stamps on some numbers, we all understand what we want to do, but we also have to understand there's a rainy day event, and there could be some items that would need to be purchased or something that in there. When we talked about tax reduction, we were looking at items that we bought out of general fund and those kind of things that we no longer would have to pay out of that. We would pay everything out of parking, so that would lower the built-in general fund to be able then do additional services or whatever we needed in those funds without having to raise taxes. So that was one way we were looking at it. The sand tax, as y'all referred to, is a paying for the $40 million sand project. When we start taking funds away from those rainy day events, and we start taking money out of that to be able to pay for things, just remember, you're going to have to make those dollars back up. And that's the only thing I want to say.
I, I hear your concerns. I think they're valid. I would amend the motion or the discussion point to say for this year only. I mean, year to year, we could go up or down, right? This is a template for discussion this year. And we had a very good year. I mean, we far exceeded expectations. We're $200 and some thousand above the expectation that was set by, by Auto Connect. So we are in a position to do something, but I don't want to lock us into every year, and I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. The only thing that we talked about, I looked over there and you weren't there, Catherine and I started talking about the same thing we talked about, Hatton, is in these funds that you have this year, if you don't spend all this, put it into a reserve fund and then build in your tax relief, because then you have that money to be able to go back to if you don't, if we have a bad year or storm. If we build this up for two years, then the third year, you could lower taxes. And then you would see what the tax you could lower the number be, because it'd be a fixed number that you already have in reserve. And that would be one thing else that we'd ask you to consider. And that's all. Catherine, do you want to give them the numbers?
Well, hang on.
Oh, sorry.
Before we do that, we will get you to center stage shortly. Why don't we discuss Mr. Kelly's recommendation? That's an alternative way to do this, right? So take the 50% and put it in a reserve fund. Is that what I heard you say?
Whatever y'all come up with this year, whatever the dollar number is, that would be put into a reserve.
So it's dedicated to tax relief, it's just not going to happen this year? Am I, am I phrasing your motion correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Martin, what do you say to that?
Well, I, I mean, so any discussion about tax rate reductions wouldn't have happened this fiscal year anyway. We've already established the tax rate for fiscal year 23, 24. So this would be going into our budget workshops in the spring to look at tax reductions for fiscal year 24, 25. So with that, as long as the allocation is put in a new fund account that's held in reserve, because I would, would also say that while a rainy day event may impact parking, rainy day events also impact our accommodation tax as well. You might not get that rental for that week because of weather conditions. And so, and then that cascades throughout all of our tax revenue sources, sales tax and, and other, you know, business drivers that support local businesses as well. So I understand the need for rainy day funds, but at the same time, I think we can still earmark a reserved fund balance for future tax reduction, and I'm, I'm willing to amend. I think you made the motion originally.
I did. For purposes of discussion only, and I, I'm comfortable with a reserve fund too, as long as it's dedicated to tax relief.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, I want, I want that to be very clear.
Yes, it needs to be designated for tax relief, absolutely.
Correct. Yeah, that is probably the safer course of action. I don't want to beat another dead pony, but I'm going to do it, just going to whip it once. We have $27 million in reserve, so it would take a lot of rainy days.
Right. Well, and, you know.
Okay. I was just going to say that.
You know, in 2021, you know, I promised taxpayers to be a good fiscal steward of, of their money, right? And so one of the things I started working on from day one was looking at a future where there is no sand tax. The, the accommodations tax, paid parking, whatever revenue streams are coming in that are associated to tourism, should be able to pay for a beach management plan going forward in the future, and residents shouldn't be burdened with a sand tax. Now, is that utopia that we can get to zero sand tax and tourism pays for the beach management plan? It may be, but daggone it, we're going to try to get there. And I think I have the support of this council in, in order to try to make that happen, right?
Well, you do, but there's another piece to this puzzle, just while we're on this theme of fiscal responsibility. So there's a long list of things, and I agree with Councilman Kraft, that, you know, what happened to our streets, and I don't want to go through the sewer nonsense, but what happened to our streets is disgraceful and has nothing to do with anybody here, per se. But if we're going to build a rec center, we're going to pave streets, we're going to increase stormwater efficiency, guess what? You need money for that. You, you cannot sit on a rainy day fund, or ultimately, you have to raise taxes. So we all need to be clear-eyed about that, right? So this money, my proposal was put it into tax relief. If it's a dedicated, committed reserve, that's fine. I could live with that. But down the road, building, fixing all these things is going to take, we're going to need more revenue. That's just reality.
I don't want to be the Chicken Little of the town council, but I also want to caution us from, yes, we're well-positioned with a $27 million reserve. However, I personally worry, and knock on wood, I'm assuming there's wood underneath that laminate, that we, in fact, have not incurred a major storm event. We came close this past weekend that would absolutely devastate what, a beach that has really very little resilience at this point, because there's not enough sand in the system. So I worry that FEMA then would not be funded to support us, and we would be in a position of having to pay for our own beach maintenance without the support of the federal government above us. So I just, as a caution, I just want to make, bring that to the forefront.
Let's stay on the point, though. Maybe a better way to go is to have a dedicated reserve fund. So I hear Councilman Martin saying yes. What do you say?
So as Mike Tyson says, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the face. And a rainy day event is we get punched in the face. Two rainy day events in a summer, we get punched in the face twice as hard. So I, I like Councilman Martin's suggestion, is just hold it in a, hold it in a separate reserve account, and then let's just see what next year is going to be.
I like our manager's recommendation. Councilman Kraft?
So much of this discussion will probably be addressed at our budget meetings.
Yes.
We anticipated $2.5 million in accommodation tax last year. We received $3.5 million in accommodation tax last year. The houses that used to rent for $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a week are now renting for $20,000, $25,000, and $30,000 a week. We have $27 million in reserve. The sky's not falling. We're in pretty good shape. If I had $27 million in reserves, I'd pay cash for my next car. Whenever we decide to spend $1.3 million, I want to be able to go back and tell people, yes, your streets are going to get paved. 35% in, in that line is $450,000, but no one other than me has said that should go to street paving. That's my thoughts.
I'm fine with street paving as a, a project that council endorses that, plus pound money, plus the residuals from last year will make a huge difference. Councilman Carter?
I do support the, the reserve fund. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for suggesting that idea. As long as we preserve it for that purpose, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Now, Madam CFO, the numbers, please. Rough, rough as they may be.
Get there eventually. Well, as you've identified, the 15%, if we continue at the revenue pace of 1.3, that's approximately $195,000. The 50% to be reserved for the tax would be $650,000, which ironically is almost exactly the rate of one cent on our tax rate. So very well done. The 35% would be $455,000. As we have it now, this money is in a separate reserve account, if you will. It is not commingled in the general fund. It is in Fund 50, which is our parking fund. So you wouldn't need to necessarily move it anywhere to another fund. It just stays in the parking reserve fund and is not used. It would roll into the fund balance of that Fund 50. It would not be allowed to be appropriated or spent without council's authority.
Okay. So I'll make a new motion, if I may, to create a hold on, help me with the, how do we want to phrase this? That revenue, revenue in tax Fund 50 be reserved for tax relief, subject to action by council next year.
And your motion includes the percentages, the foundations?
Yes, I'm sorry. 50%, 15%, and 35%. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Can I ask one question before you vote? I'm sorry. So the motion was to hold the funds for tax relief, but then your, excuse me, your percentages are for specific areas of projects?
Right, I'm coming back.
Okay.
So 600,000 or 50% would be held in Account 50. Correct?
195.
Should we just go ahead and include in the motion that future spendagers out of the fund account would go to discussion at the budget workshop? For example, street improvements?
I was going to offer a second motion that would take the 35% and have it held in 50 dedicated for street repaving, but I don't know how specific we need to make this. As you, as you said, Councilman Kraft, we can take it up at the budget meeting.
Because my only concern would be, number one, Scott's not here, that I, nope, Scott's not here. And Scott's report at our last budget workshop said, if you paved everything that's left to pave, you create a future maintenance bubble that's going to be very expensive to pay for. We did throw extra money at paving this year. I have no idea what our status is on a paving contractor. We always seem to struggle to find one, and even if we find one, sometimes they can't even complete the work.
All right.
So I would just like to hear an update on where we are with streets.
That's fair.
Before we throw another $400,000 at a street.
There's a consensus of council that that would be one of the, if the priority, if not one of the top priorities.
I would agree to that, yeah.
Let's just approve this motion, hopefully, put it in, in reserve in Account 50, and we'll come back to it at the budget. Councilman Kraft, are you okay with that?
I would hold off if I didn't trust my colleagues. I'm okay with that.
Please call this vote.
Mayor Protembach?
Yes.
Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Chulo?
Yes.
And Councilman Martin?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm delighted to get this agenda back to you. Thank you, Catherine. Is there, is there more?
Just one more point of clarification. You have a budget currently for the Parking Fund 50, and $680,000 are currently already budgeted to be appropriated to the fund balance in that fund. So with this motion, we may have to bring back a budget amendment to make it consistent with your current motion.
For the 1.1, yeah.
And, and sorry if I may, the second point, just to keep in mind, is that the revenues cross your fiscal years. So it's a little bit more complex, because some of it is already in prior year. So if you look in your budget and you see the appropriation, it is not going to be 1.3, because it was prior year. Just clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the calculations. Okay, Madam Mayor, that's your chair.
I could get used to this.
Well, if I didn't, I have to give myself a B, only a B, because I missed Councilman Chulo, and I apologize again.
You did very well.
My apologies to you, sir.
Madam Mayor, before we move from parking, since we have Mr. Varner here with us and the town manager, my fellow councilperson, Mr. Chulo, back the end of November, had asked for additional data for Auto, for, for our knowledge and clarification. There were several points that were made, and I'm wanting to follow up and wonder when we might see that, the data that had been requested.
Yeah, so we met earlier in the room back there to be able to look at what you had asked for. The data that we received before was sort of the pre-audit information that we were getting on a weekly basis. Jim came in, we looked at what we were asking for. He's going to go back and put that online for us, so we can go back online and be able to pull that data, and then we can provide the book, just as we had up to May. We can give you those numbers that had the, the spots, the times, not really the times, but the spots, the number of permits and all that information that was before. We'll be able to give that to you, so you'll be able to see more of that data.
Right, thank you.
And then there's one more item on the agenda.
Yes, there is.
I don't know if you just got through putting all the money somewhere else, we don't have the, the money to pay for this anymore.
We do, actually, I think. Let's go to 2.2 in your agenda, consideration of purchasing three portable public restroom units. Mr. Kelly, I go to you.
Back when we started talking about paid parking, very, very beginning, we started talking about the amenities and things that we needed to look at to make sure that we were putting something about. were putting something of value back into the program. The mayor and I and the finance director, we went to Ocean Isle a few months ago, and we went down there, and one of the sightseeing trips that we had, we went and looked at restrooms. So we went and visited this location that has this, Holden Beach, Ocean Isle has these. And we were wanting to put these at the large parking lots to be able to provide some kind of restroom service beside the porta-johns at these locations and put foot washes with them as well. So that was the recommendation. These prices are good until January 1st, when they go up for the new market for the upcoming year. If council so chooses to order these, that we would get them right at the first week in April and have those installed and put into place. There's two ways in here, air-conditioned or non-air-conditioned. They don't sell many of the non-air-conditioned ones. It's a $5,000 difference per unit. So we'd recommend going the air-conditioned units. These also are portable, so if we had a storm event, we would hook them up and take them off the island. Councilman Bach asks where we'd be storing these. In the off-season, it'd be out the airport road facility. If we had the concert like the SOS we had, we could put the extra bathrooms there and be able to use those for that. And then if we ever did have a storm and we had to close the bridges, we'd be able to put them on the, one on each side, so the police and fire that's doing the checkpoints would have facilities there as well. So it's a multi-use kind of thing that we were looking at, and it's something we talked about in the very beginning, to provide amenities back to the paid parking program.
Are there questions?
Were these, are these units part of a competitive bid, or we saw them somewhere and we liked them and?
So Ocean Isle went through the bid process, and actually, the person lives or has a house in Ocean Isle, it's the second home. We didn't, we talked to the mayor while we were there that day. They had gone out for a bid on that, and these people are the ones who received the bid. So then we asked for the quote. They gave us the same price as what they gave Ocean Isle. But like I said, they're only guaranteeing this up to January 1st.
Right. When did they go out to bid in Ocean Isle?
Probably 18 months ago, 20 to 18 months ago. We saw their newest one they had. They had an older model that had been replaced or that's used at a different location, and the newer one is put where this is.
And are they, I assume they're under warranty?
Yes, sir, they do have a warranty with them. I don't think it's included in the packet, but I'll have to go back and get how long that is.
And what's the estimated cost of maintenance for us?
The only thing that Ocean Isle's been able, or had to do, they pressure wash them periodically for the salt water. When they take them off, they take them to the coral wash and give them an undercarriage wash. And the only other maintenance that they had was some vandalism, and the company has changed how they are now hooking the sinks to the walls according to the vandalism.
And just on a, on a long-term basis, I realize these are mobile and emergency responsive units, you can plug them where you need them, but on a long-term basis, as we look at the park and the center of our town, are we thinking about a more permanent solution, the restrooms?
So everything, restrooms that we building would be built into the flood zones. So then they'd have to be flood-proofed. Facilities would have to be sort of a little bit different than what we normally have. But we've been looking at putting one at the park, and we've ran into a little bit of problems with the flood walls and the wash-throughs and those kind of things, just where we want to put it. Looking at something portable like this would sort of alleviate some of those problems that we had.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
$5,000 difference between air-conditioned and non-air-conditioned. Is that a window air-conditioning unit or?
No, no, that's no air conditioning. And then the unit itself put into it's only $5,000 to put the air conditioning into the unit.
And that's central air or on the floor? Okay. It's not just some window unit?
No.
It looks like rooftop.
It is a rooftop unit.
So would the plan be to put these three units at three locations? They would stay there all summer unless there is a special event like at Middleton?
Yes, ma'am. They would be at 604, down the east end, Middleton Park, the Cabana parking lot, or the park, whichever one you like to say, and then down the west end, West End parking lot. It won't be parked, and the parking lot will be parked probably at 69th Street.
And who will take care of these units in terms of cleaning them out?
It goes underneath Public Works Operations. They already clean the public restrooms that we have now.
Okay, so they would keep them clean on a daily or twice daily and keep them stocked with supplies and stuff?
Yes, ma'am. There's a storage unit inside this structure that everything is stored there in the front. I believe there's a picture of it.
I am, I understand our need for these, and I think it is a good amenity for folks who, who come to our beach and to our events. I am concerned about the cost versus long-term strategic planning for the, for the amenities that we need. This is an awful lot of money, and I'm also a little concerned about the really lack of
Anyone else?
Yeah, a question about kind of longevity. Like, draw us a picture. We just vote to acquire these three. I mean, what can we expect in terms of how long are they, can we continue to use them?
The, these restrooms?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, Holden Beach has had one for, I think, seven years. We looked at the, Sarasota, Florida had these back when we were looking at them the first time. They were getting anywhere from 10 to 15 years of use out of them. And then they would rehab and move them to a permanent location and take them off a trailer. So they were repurposing the units themselves, putting them at another facility. It all depends really with the environment. If we put one in there, if we want to just get one to put at 604 or something and see what the, the environment that we have that it's in, just as a starting base to go for. I think that may be a logical thing as well, just we don't have to go three to start with. The only thing we were looking at the three was we have the three large parking lots and trying to provide an amenity in those parking lots.
Might, it might be more prudent, given the cost. Pick up on my colleague's question, to do a trial with one and see how it performs, or at least plan the budget such that we begin to accrue more of them over time as we need them. I would hope, as we look to the future, and I'm talking a 10-year horizon, that we're going to get a more, we're going to get a permanent solution to this problem. I hear what you're saying about the difficulty with the flood zone, but long-term, we need a better solution, seems to me, than moving these things around. I would support buying one, using it on a trial basis.
Did the vendor give us any indication of what their price increase would be on January 1?
About $6,200. The whole package will be about $6,200 increase.
Per unit.
Great. Okay. Did you say that this would replace the porta-johns at some of these locations?
We probably, right now, we have four. We would see, we'd probably leave a regular unit there, not the AD handicap one, but we'd probably leave a regular porta-john at each location.
So the, does this, is this going to take up parking?
No, sir.
At the west end?
It'd be parked at 69th Street.
Oh, you're going to put it up there.
And then there'll be a sidewalk that leads to the parking lot.
Okay.
And then there'll be a spot where people can pull off and use the foot wash or the restroom.
And I understand you said staff cleans public bathrooms today, but what's the containment unit for this trailer? I see it's got a working toilet. Does that?
It looks straight into our water and sewer system.
Oh, you're going to connect it to our system? Okay.
Yes, sir. It has a storage tank for, if you had to use it portable. Excuse me, but we would be putting this straight into our water and sewer system.
Okay. But even if these get relocated for a special event, we would lose connectivity to our system, so then we go to their storage tank capacity?
At Middleton Tank, we already have sewer available on that street, so we would just put quick connection for those points.
Okay, all right.
And so you'd be able to hook in a quick connect.
Okay. But if ever the event arise that we could not connect, are we properly equipped to empty the containment unit?
So we have a Vactron trucks and a trailer that holds 1,000 gallons, so we would pump it out ourselves.
Okay, so we're not, we're not going to consume any parking spaces. This would replace some porta-johns, but not all porta-johns?
Yes, sir.
And we're equipped to maintain them?
Yes, sir. Ask Scott today to make sure.
Even the compliant, that ramps, that ADA compliant ramp's pretty massive that they show in the?
They, when they come set up the first time, we set that up. Now, at Middleton Park, they will be parked in the grass area at the park. They will not be taken up the parking spot.
Okay. All right. I like the idea of maybe some kind of pilot program or trial run. However, given the potential future cost increase, I would suggest maybe two for a pilot instead of one, but that's just my thought.
I could live with two. It's a third less, probably a more valid trial, right? Two different locations. But again, I think we should begin to look at this from a longer-term view in terms of what we need when we need it. I guess that's my frustration.
All summer, people would approach each council member and say, what are you all going to do with all that money? You're getting from paid parking. And all of us could not give a direct answer. My answer was, there's a strong possibility we'll be putting bathrooms on the beach. Value to the citizens. I like the idea of putting bathrooms on the beach. Value to the citizens. If you all are inclined to think two's the best route to go right now, that's, I have no argument. I like the idea of giving the citizens a value for the inconvenience of paid parking.
So then the more important question is, do we have $120,000 available in another account, either through a budget amendment, or we're running a surplus in an area for the fiscal year?
So you just got through putting 15% back for operational items?
Yeah.
That's 120.
Which still leaves?
Write it down somewhere.
Seventy-five.
There was $195,000, I think.
Considerable amount.
That leaves the 75 for Bob's stuff.
Yep.
Or to put towards the paving.
You've effectively zeroed that part of it.
So, Mr. Kelly, is, so instead of saying $120,000, is that the true cost? You know, you've got, and I look at the build, the build-out cost options, you've got a modular ramp for additional $7,000, delivery with training for assembly, $3,900.
There'll only be one delivery training charge.
Okay. So it's 120 plus $3,900. And how about the ramp?
You have to have the ramps for the handicap.
Okay, so it's 120 plus $3,900 plus $14,000.
I'm a lot more comfortable with two. Leave some kind of a cushion in that system maintenance. And I agree with Councilman Kraft, it's a tangible, deliverable, obviously you can see and use.
And if these work well? The budget workshop in the spring?
There you go.
So if I did my math right, then the total cost of purchase is $137,900. Taking that out of the $195,000, that leaves you a little less than $60,000 for ongoing maintenance. Mr. Kelly, does that, does that feel sufficient?
It will be this year because we already have funds set in, other funds for a storm, signs for parking and those kind of things. Next year's budget that you'll be starting on is when we'll start to streamline everything and move everything for paid parking into paid parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, is there any chance you might be able to get volume discount if you decided to acquire two instead of one?
This is the volume discount. We asked, we asked that to start with. I think it was $6,200 they get, I mean, 62, $62,000, and I think they gave us a $4,000 credit for buying two.
Do we have a motion?
Sir, motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor. We need a motion, Madam Mayor.
I'd make a motion to purchase two portable restrooms at the cost of $137,900. Is that the number I heard?
I think my math is good. I'll second that.
All in favor?
It's unanimous. I think you'll be, you'll be pleased, and we did make a commitment to the people of Oak Island to expand parking funds for beachfront amenities in part, and I'm just, I feel good that we're able to also have a large portion of that money to go toward parking or whatever other, I mean, paving, or whatever other use the council seems.
And just clarification for staff, that's the air-conditioned units.
Yes, with the accommodations ramp. I think you'll be pleased with them.
Last question, if I could. So from a after-hours, so are they, at a certain time, they would be locked and secured?
Yes, sir.
As our other bathrooms are. Are they not?
If we don't, they get destroyed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other question I have, Madam Mayor, the paving money that y'all talked about, would y'all be interested in us bringing back an RFP for the January meeting for the paving? And we can put the dollars that we have in currently, and if council would like to make any changes at that point, you can at that meeting, so we can get that advertised for this year. We have one other project that we'd like to add into the works is the parking lot for the Cabana area, and what we're trying to do is add in more projects within that, so hopefully we get some more competitive bidding to try, to raise our dollars that we're putting out there for the projects.
I personally would like to accelerate the paving project because we still have the end of the last project, plus the prioritization for this next project, and it would give us over $1 million to extend to an RFP if council is willing.
Council is willing, but the problem is the last time the vendor reneged. I mean, we're prepared.
Got a better offer.
It was a commitment, actually, contractual commitment.
Anybody wants to start a paving company? This is a great area to start your business.
So the answer to that is yes.
Madam Mayor, one other, while we're talking about RFPs, one other point of clarification. I personally would like to, for council to see the RFP that is crafted for the traffic engineering study before that is released.
Yep.
Yeah, we typically get a chance to review those drafts.
We'll bring it to you at the January meeting.
Is there any other business? Actually, it's a special meeting we can't entertain on the business, related business.
That's correct.
Is there any other related business? Then do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Very much. And, Mr. Bob, this went very well because of your planning and council's cooperation.